Nothing yet.
Commissioner Sakovic, can you hear us okay?
Hello, this is Tom Sakovic, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay.
Thank you. Welcome everyone. We'll call to order this meeting. Oh, I'm sorry. Got a little quick there. Today on Flash Gordon, Commissioner Gordon. Okay, now we're ready to call this meeting to order. We typically start these meetings with a prayer reading or thought followed by the pledge. Sounds like Nikki Herbst is gonna give us a prayer and then after that Bryce Armstrong is gonna lead us in the pledge.
Our dear kind heavenly Father, we humbly bow our heads before thee this day. We're so thankful for the opportunity that we have to live in America and for the freedoms that we enjoy and the opportunity that we have to come and meet together and agree on things and make laws and ordinances to make all of our life better. We're thankful for all the time and service that goes in on behalf of our freedoms and all those that serve each day. We love thee so much. We say this name with thy son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks Nikki.
If you're able and willing, please join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bryce. Okay, first item is recognition of the July 2024 Employee of the Month.
I'm excited about this one. We've got amazing employees in Utah County and it's, it's always great to see them recognized. Oftentimes they're not employees that I get to work with on a daily basis because I only cover a third of the county. But this one is one I get to work with regularly and very well deserving. Our employee of the month is Ralph Barnes. Yes, you, come on up. It says I, the person who nominated Ralph said, "I would like to nominate Ralph on behalf of the Utah County Employee of the Month. In my three-plus years working with the county supervisor Ralph has always been available to answer my questions and concerns. We have had many discussions about policies and procedures and Ralph has always been patient and responsive when fielding my questions. I am consistently impressed by how quickly he replies to my emails and how accessible he has been. I know he has a lot of responsibilities to attend to, but he's never made me feel like an inconvenience when I call or email him with random policy-related questions. Ralph is knowledgeable and answers my questions clearly and succinctly. Most of all Ralph seems to genuinely care about the well-being and job satisfaction of county employees and has helped me find solutions when employees need assistance or had an issue. I truly appreciate working with an HR director that is professional, knowledgeable, caring, responsive, and reliable."
You got the mic.
Yeah, I'm doing the sign.
Oh, you wanna sixty days in, tap out.
I'm tapping out. So yeah, this is very awkward, I will say. And thank you very much, it's very kind. I, I'm always encouraging recognition. To be the recipient is really, I'm, I never think about how hard it can be to be the recipient and it's, it can be a challenge, but, but thank you. It should be the, you know, Department of the Month because I couldn't be successful without my team, so I wanna thank my team and anyway, it's, it's great here to work at Utah County and you are correct, we have awesome employees here. So I'm glad to just be one of them and it's great to work for, for you, for you three and, and thank you again.
Well, and having worked with you as a department head prior to being a commissioner, I couldn't agree with this more. You, you were always very open and responsive and very helpful as a department head as I was working through things. But I think one of the things that a lot of people don't see and maybe don't realize is how much you've advocated for resources for the employees. Prior to being the HR manager, there was no learning management system in the county and you pushed to give employees training and ongoing help through a learning management system. You also are, we had no employee engagement survey. Apparently the county didn't feel if, didn't care if employees liked working here or not. You have championed that. That is something that has been under your tenure is an employee engagement survey, an employee recognition program with a potential bonus structure that once again came under your tenure as an HR manager and you can see measurable results in the satisfaction of our employees, which means the service they give our citizens under your tenure. So you absolutely deserve this and it was my honor to get to give that to you. Thank you Ralph.
Thank you.
What are you gonna do with the picture? Picture of us and you.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it on my desk.
Congratulations Ralph. Thank you.
Oh, we got a whole packet for ya. Where's Ralph?
Oh yeah, all this.
All the goodies.
Funzies.
Should I get a month off?
But knowing you, you'd still answer your phone.
Okay, thank you again. Now is the moment where we'll build our consent agenda. Is there anything on the existing consent agenda that any commissioner would like to hold of those twenty-nine items?
I did not have any.
I have none.
Okay, let's build on that with the regular agenda items. Which items, one through, one through nine that you'd like to hold?
Um, the number.
Number four.
Yes.
We wanna hold and discuss item four?
Yep, item four.
Okay. Any others in that section?
No.
Not at this time.
Okay, and items ten through fifteen.
I had none. Oh, you know what, I wanna hold number fifteen, but I.
Yeah, you, you have that to read it?
I don't have it to read it.
If not, I can pull it up for you.
Yeah, if you don't mind pulling that up. I would like number fifteen. That's it. That's all I had.
Any others from you, Commissioner?
No, no, no others, no.
Okay, and then closed sessions, do we have any? Ezra?
Uh, sorry, I meant to make that request to the board earlier and I realized I forgot. We.
You wanna hold item twelve?
Just number nineteen, it's the only one.
Oh, gotcha. And strike sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen? Good, okay.
Okay, we will be holding on regular agenda item number four and number fifteen. As far as close, we will strike sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen and we will hold number nineteen.
Awesome. Thanks, Jolene. Okay. Item four, here comes Greg.
Good afternoon, Greg Robinson, Community Development. This item has come before you. It is a recommendation to amend the Utah County Land Use Ordinance, Section eight point one six, which is associated with temporary uses and structures. The application was received by B&amp;H Properties. Their recommendation is to amend the certain types of temporary uses to allow permanent structures to remain on the property. After the temporary use is concluded, those temporary uses that have been included would be seasonal or holiday events, seasonal sales and services, and agritourism. The recommendation you should have as the red lines in, in the agenda, the staff has recommended that, that this application be denied, this amendment be denied. Based on the findings and recommendations in the staff report, kind of addressing that temporary uses are commercial in nature and generally those uses are intended to be temporary to allow for those uses to exist without having a, a major impact on the surrounding areas, which would be, in these areas would be agricultural and residential. The Planning Commission addressed this application at their last meeting. They did make a recommendation, which you should also have the red lines for that in the agenda packet. They recommended that the changes be limited to agritourism only. They also recommended that there be limitations added to address the concerns that were brought up in the meeting. The, and then finally, the, we have received complaints on the the use that is, that has existed with this property and this, this property owner's use, temporary uses. The complaint, one of the complaints did submit a recommendation for that, for changes to the ordinance that had probably been forwarded to you from the attorney's office. If you have questions, I'll be happy to answer those. Otherwise, I'll, I know that there are people here to address that and.
Recommendations from, I know the, the neighbor that has filed complaint.
Correct.
Do we also have any like, other than what the Planning Commission gave as recommendation? Because it was, I've read through the minutes and it looks like they asked for some action to be taken, right? As you mentioned, for agritourism.
Yep.
But my understanding is that staff's biggest fear is a repeat of, you know, situation that you had a number of years ago.
Correct.
So height restrictions and some of those things have, is what really, you know, as, as we talk, as I read the minutes and I hear like avoiding Ferris wheels and things of that nature, right? Like how do we?
Right, so, so some of the, some of the uses, the, the intent of the ordinance is that many of these uses are kind of intense in, in the nature that, that we allow. We, we have very little restrictions on what kind of uses can be allowed and can be temporary in nature when it comes to these types of events. And that's intentional. We want to be able to allow people to do these types of events. However, the intent is that they, they remain temporary so that, so that they don't expand and have a, a major impact on the agricultural and residential nature of the surrounding area. So, that's kinda the recommendations that we have. So we, we don't have specific recommendations other than to not make these changes to the ordinance, but if there are, if the commission feels it needs to move forward, then we, we can work to kind of address those concerns to make sure that, that you would be comfortable with, with any changes that would be made. However, our recommendation is still to kind of maintain the temporary nature of these uses to kind of allow the nature of the, of the area to remain the same.
Yeah, as, as I look at it, I wanna make sure that we're not convoluting issues of code with current violations with particular properties, right? I don't like the idea of looking at one situation and setting permanent zoning requirements based off of one situation.
Correct.
So I wanna make sure that we're not, that we're not convoluting those, that we're looking at each of these codes separately and looking at how they affect all property owners and all neighborhoods and all use cases. Now with that said, there are some of the, some of the areas of our current code that don't make sense to me, that I would like to see changed and you know, I, I think that if a, if a shed is used during agritourism activities, that there's no need for that shed to be completely removed from the property when they're done. But I can definitely see, for example, like a Ferris wheel, right? And so I do think that that there are some changes that are warranted, but we need to make sure that we're taking into account, you know, those, those different areas.
Sure, yes. As we, as we reviewed this, we did also find areas that we think that could be addressed similar to what you're, you're discussing. The, one of the, one of the things that we have found in trying to enforce some of these, the temporary uses as, as currently, as it currently stands is is kind of, it's difficult to explain, but sometimes the line and the nature of, of what it would be a permitted use on the property versus what would turn into a commercial use on the property, meaning you could have a playground, some playground equipment that somebody uses for their family and house and, and visitors to their property.
And they're not gonna have a permit for that.
Correct. But then the commercial nature of equipment that would be something similar to that would, would be different. So we understand and we, we don't, don't disagree with you and, and so I don't wanna make it seem like we're trying to stop people from using their, in utilizing their property and, and to be able to continue to use these temporary uses as, as it's currently configured. And I understand that there might be changes that we need to make. We just want to make sure that it's kind of balanced with the idea that this is, some of the temporary uses are, can, can be very intense and disruptive.
Right.
And so we just wanna make sure that those are handled appropriately.
Yeah, and I would think there'd be a balance in there. I mean, a shed that is used for concessions during agritourism, that is used for storage during the rest of the year, that may or may not need a permit because it's not a permanent structure. But to make them try to remove that from the structure because it's used during the agritourism, like I wanna make sure we're not requiring nonsensical things like that.
So what we do with code is just nonsensical, but I'm just kidding.
Yeah, right. I like it.
Well, I've seen a few codes.
You have a hard life some days.
I understand.
You know, you have to live in a black and white, right? And this is, you know, there's definitely, based upon the recommendation from the Planning Commission, oh, sorry.
Sorry, I was gonna add one. Bryce Armstrong's staff, our, our current code has attempted to address what Commissioner Powers Gardner's brought up. We do have a provision that says unless that structure is, has been issued a permit for a use that's already allowed on the.
Right, my point is, if it's a shed that's movable, it doesn't need a permit.
Or land use a permit and so.
Okay.
For sure, but, but, but yeah, yeah, there's some, some issues that can be addressed there. And quite frankly, this has been in place for a number of years and operators, other, certain, a lot of operators have been able to make it work under the current provision, so it hasn't been really brought to our attention till now, so.
Good? For now, but you know, don't go too far.
Don't go too far, that front row is ready for you.
Many know that we have a connection to a fun farm agritourism, if you will, in our family. I'm not sure how this works because you know, my civil attorney here might tell me to recuse myself, but we don't really make any money, you know? I don't, I'm just grunt labor. So I think by disclosing that, I've probably checked a box that knows that, you know, however if I voted for or against this, you know, I was elected to do so? Is that maybe an accurate statement? We have plenty of people here that, that, I mean, I see Glenn Rays, Rex Larson, who somewhat helped us build this ordinance originally, right? And so, and then I see other, other people. I know we're not in a public hearing, but they're certainly here if you wanted to ask, ask any questions. I've lived it, you know, so I, and I know not, not everybody's had the opportunity like Commissioner Gardner to be a farmer. So I say that a little tongue in cheek, but.
My U-Pick wasn't nearly as big as Gordo's, but.
You did good.
But we did let kids pet our sheep.
Fair enough, fair enough. But, but clearly, you know, anytime we can, you know, get kids, youth, youth if you will, especially out into the open and, and doing those things that you're talking about. You know, I know there was some back and forth of, you know, where, where do we draw the line of agritourism, you know, and how, you know, is, I know the train comes up, is the train, you know, really conducive to the agritourism and things like that and, you know? I think at the end of the day, I think what the Planning Commission saw and, and is that, you know, coming to some sort of a resolution to make sure that, you know, we can continue to help agritourism is, is a benefit to our, our community. We certainly spill that way from our family. But when, and you also know me by now too, that when the Planning Commission makes a recommendation, I really struggle to go against them. They've put in a lot of time and effort as a staff to, I mean, it was a long meeting, the, the Planning Commission meeting, it was hours and hours, right? And, and so I appreciate their work and their recommendation. And so I think making some sort of a motion is important to, to move forward, but I also do think that, you know, maybe there are some things that we could make sure that, you know, we don't not have covered, you know? And, I mean, I don't know if it's just the, you know, noise and lights, but there are certain things and I'd love to, I'd love to know the other commissioners' opinions on, you know, what they've thought through and, and how to resolve this.
Well, I do appreciate our staff and they're very hardworking and sometimes my bent towards property rights doesn't always agree with them and they've worked with me in the past to try to find good compromise. And while I do appreciate our Planning Commission, I'm more than willing to vote against them if I feel like I need to. So, but I do think that there is, that there is a space here where we, I do feel that we do need some changes in the current code. And I think that there's going to be a good balance that we need to find. I'm not a hundred percent convinced that we've reached that balance today, so I would love to hear from folks and I would love to hear their opinions because I think there should be some changes to the code. I don't, like I said, I'm not convinced that what we have, the suggestions we have are quite there. But I do want this to make sense. I want this to lean towards property rights, but then also recognize that we don't want Ferris wheels all over everywhere, right? So my thought is I would like to hear more. This is not in my portfolio area, so I haven't done as much, I haven't had as much opportunity to, to speak with folks as you've had, Commissioner Gordon, but I'd like a little more information and I want to go into that with everyone knowing that I feel there does need to be some change from what we currently have today, but I don't know if we're quite there. Or maybe one of you guys convinces me, I don't know, we'll see.
And for my part, this whole thing is evolving as we're doing very well. There are some changes that need, likely have to be made. We are moving in that right direction, but the dialogue is what's key to making sure that what we finalize is gonna take care of the majority of the issues that we address in this whole thing. So for me, yes, there's more that needs to be addressed, but I think we're moving in the right direction, so thank you.
And as Amelia said, we have several people here today and, I mean, if people are willing to take time out of their Wednesday afternoon to be here, perhaps, you know, it's probably a good, a good time to.
Yeah, and I would like to.
Not necessarily have a three-hour public hearing, but essentially we could have some of the, some of that dialogue of, of the main thing. I brought up the, you know, train and the train horn, right? That's been one thing that's, you know, as you talk about private property rights, you know, other neighbors are like, hey, if that spooks my horse, you know, I would, I, you know, I've had that conversation with Cornbellies that I don't think that they would, hey, that's not their intention, right? They wanna make sure that what they're doing also allows neighbors to be able to, you know, perform their agricultural, you know, operations as well.
Yeah, that's gotta be the primary purpose, right? I would like to hear from people, but I would also caution to say if someone else has already said what you wanna say.
Yeah, for sure.
That if you wanna just add to it, just be like what he said, right? Instead of us sitting here for, for three hours. However you wanna handle that, Mr. Chair.
Terrific. Do, I think it might be beneficial to, to just make sure we understand some of, like I mentioned earlier, we do have a list of suggestions from the family that filed the original complaint. Is anyone here from, from their family? Okay, and is there someone that would be willing to kind of maybe just address the, the, I've read through some of the minutes, or the minutes and, and understand some of the complaints, but would you be willing to maybe address some of, some of the major complaints that you have specifically with agritourism as it is? And if you'll just come to the microphone, state your name and then just give us a few minutes.
Yes, my name is Sean Connor. I represent the Scott family who live directly across to the. Yes, my name is Sean Connor. I represent the Scott family who live directly across to the west of B and H Properties. As you'll see from both the minutes and from the subsequent letter I sent to the county attorney's office, a lot of the concerns revolve around, I mean, first, first of all, living across from Cornbellies. Being, being a family of horse trainers, it's difficult because for sixty-five days out of the year, Cornbellies is permitted to operate. As I understand, they only operated sixty days last year, but it is what it is. So for sixty days out of the year, they've got noise, they've got lights, they've got all other things which are legally allowed under the ordinance, which is fine. My clients don't like it, but that's the law and they're okay with that. The problem arises where permanent structures are being introduced, which allows the situation to grow. So a lot of their, a lot of their current concerns as it relates to this body is if they're allowed to, if Cornbellies, B and H and other agritourism, I guess other agricultural landowners are allowed to do, uh, to move forward and create permanent structures. Where, and as, uh, Commissioner Gardner said, where is that line drawn? Where, like what is allowed versus not allowed? A shed that's used for concessions, but then during the rest of the year is used for, you know, agricultural use. I mean, that's one thing. But, but if you look at the actual situation of the specific property, they have vehicles converted into, I'm going to call them carnival type games. I don't know if that's the right definition for them. But those types of things just really have no use in an actual agricultural property. I mean, unless they're used year round by, you know, the family of the property owner for funds and funding games, I mean, it's kind of, it's kind of excessive because if there wasn't the agritourism statute or the agritourism ordinance, those would never be allowed on agricultural land according to the current zoning. And so the si- the situation, as my clients see it, is if this, if they, if agritourism allows property owners to allow permanent structures and to create permanent structures, that allows it to grow. That allows, I mean, address Ferris wheels, potentially a roller coaster if it complies with the, the county ordinances, what's, what's stopping them? And I'm, I'm addressing B and H, I mean, I'm addressing B and H's current situation, but we live in a capitalist market. What's stopping, you know, landowner A, landowner B, landowner C from seeing what's happening at Cornbellies and saying, I want a piece of that action? And so in order to compete with Cornbellies, they put something in that's even bigger. It's even be- even better. There's, without that kind of temporary aspect to the code, it's going to grow out of proportion because, and as, I mean, as Cornbellies will probably know, there's a lot more money in the agritourism than there potentially is in actually running farmland and selling crops and things like that. The agritourism is a real moneymaker potentially. And the potential's high for subsequent landowners who want to compete. What other questions do you guys have? I'm happy to address anything.
No, I think, and it's great because I mean, just from my standpoint, I lean towards property rights. So if Cornbellies wants to put a roller coaster on their property and it fits, you know, they're not operating at more than sixty-five days a year, which is what our code says, if they want to spend the money and put it there, I tend to lean towards that, right? I mean, I'm, I'm the one who voted yes on putting, um, putting reception centers up Hubble Creek Canyon because I feel like if a property owner wants to put a reception center up there and they want to meet the code requirements for parking, I mean, it's better than everybody who just throws wedding receptions up there and doesn't have code requirements for parking. So, um, yeah, and I do understand that, that the neighbors don't always love that, but I, I'm a firm believer in property rights. Um, as long as, like you say, it's not bothering the horses, which is the primary property. So they're gonna, there's a good chance that there's something that, you know, a silo with a slide coming out of it. Is it used year round? Is there a huge agricultural aspect to it? No, but I mean, I'd be like, I got six kids, they go down the slide. I mean, if it were me, that's what I'd say, right? So I think they're, we're not all going to love it, but I think that that's, that's the nature of compromise, right?
Do you have any questions, uh, for Sean, Commissioner Sakovich?
None for me. Thank you very much.
Could I address what you said really quickly?
Yeah.
By that logic though, would that, why would we have zoning requirements in the first place? If, I mean, if you're allowed to do whatever you, if you're allowed to construct whatever you want on your property and it doesn't really matter the zoning necessarily, as long as you can point towards, oh, well, sixty-five days out of the three hundred sixty-five days a year, I'm allowed to use this commercially. Why even have, you know, a lot of the zoning requirements that we have? This is almost a kind of a backdoor way to change the zoning because if you're allowed to, if the current zoning as it stands says, well, you're only allowed to construct structures that, and get building permits for these that comply with the current zoning ordinances, which are residential agricultural, but then turn around and say, oh, well, because of this small portion of the year, we can build whatever we want, call it an agritourism structure, get a permit for it, get approval for it, where otherwise it wouldn't be allowed. Why even have these ordinances in the first place?
This is what happens when you elect a libertarian leaning Republican.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
I mean, you're not wrong and it's not backwards. I would be fine changing the code, but when the people of the county voted for Ron Swanson in heels, this is what you got. So.
Okay, fair enough.
Thanks, Sean. If we have any more questions, we'll ping you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, you know, ironically, we do have a roller coaster on Gordo's that, who just laughed. Cody just laughed because you pedal with a bike and it just, and it's pretty small, but just to be transparent, there is a roller coaster.
During the other three hundred days a year, your children have probably pedaled their little roller coaster.
Yeah, probably right. Yeah. No, and I, and you bring that up jokingly, but the truth is, you know, uh, the, I, I heard being able to use facilities and, and things, you know, if it, we call it carnival games or whatever it be, outside of the sixty-five game days, you know, then that's not what it's intended for, right? Like, we don't want, we don't want on Valentine's Day, right? Like a huge big event that.
Right. But at the same time, like on Mother's Day, while everyone's going to visit your mom, if all the grandkids are going to ride the roller coaster and go down the slide, they, I mean, I'm not going to prevent them from doing that.
Yeah, I guess really what I'm doing is ratting myself out. Like, we, we haven't, we haven't taken down a lot of our permanent structures. And when I say we, I'm going to blame my nephew publicly, but anyway, but like, you know, that, so I think that the things that are in place and, and I don't know, maybe Rex Larson would be the guy to, to talk to this, like what the original intent was, like with the days, the days that were, um, I hate to call him up and put him on the spot, but I know he'd be willing to. But, um, the, just because he was probably.
Look, if the godfather of our ag community wants to show up at our meeting, he's going to have to speak. That's just how it works.
That's the best thing you've ever been called, Rex. The godfather of the ag community.
Yeah, you drug me off a tractor. I was on a tractor hauling hay, but my wife came to get me. Uh, just a little history, I guess. I'll keep it brief. Eight years ago, uh, well, prior to that, our, our daughter and our family had moved back from Nevada. They came and said, what can we do to help you on the farm? And jokingly, I said, help me make more money. And, uh, so our daughter created a Google document that all of the family could give input in. And it went from selling popsicles to whatever, you know, whatever grandkid came up with. The two things that rose to the top were corn maize and pumpkin patch. And so we came to the county to see what we could do about that. There was no ordinance in place for agritourism. We worked with community development and, uh, reviewed ordinances from other counties and tried to build the best that we could at that time. They asked us to come in with a list of all of the activities that we would like to do. And Peggy and community development and others, yes, no, yes, no, went down the list. One of the, uh, major requirements for it to, in their minds to, uh, fit agritourism was the, uh, temporary uh, structures, the temporary use of things. It required us to utilize farm materials to build like our giant slide. The base of that is hay bales and corn fodder bales and whatever else would fit the right dimensions. Uh, that's been seven years and it's, it's deteriorated. It's organic. We would love to rebuild our slide and make it safe and make it something that, that, that we could utilize. And, uh, yeah, if we have a family, maybe they'd go down, go down the slide, you know, another time during the year. But we worked really hard to follow the ordinance as it's been written and as we understood it. And so part of me, uh, feels it, that allowing someone to come in who didn't get permits until later, who came in and built things that weren't permitted when they built them, that, that, that kind of hurts me. That, that says, well, just because you followed the rules, that, that means nothing. And, uh, so it, it puts me in a, a diff- difficult position, you know? Yes, I would love to add some safety because of permanence to some of our structures. I would love to, uh, continue to portray a family farm and teaching people about agriculture and not a carnival. A carnival's a carnival and you'll see that on, by the city park on the twenty-fourth over here in Spanish. That's not agritourism. I think, you know, it was mentioned by the last speaker. You've got to be very careful as you write this code, as you look at this ordinance and as you measure what promotes agriculture. If it's just to come out in the county and, and, uh, ride a train or roller coaster, does that promote agriculture? I don't know. I mean, that's a question I think you're going to have to seriously consider. As, as you look at this ordinance, I know that the ordinance needs some work. The legislative analyst from Utah Farm Bureau is actually here and he's, as I've talked with him, he says, he compares our county ordinance to other ordinances in the state. And he said, there's a lot of problems with Utah counties. It's here and it's here and even find it is, is difficult. So I think as you look at that, it's, it's very important that we consolidate and that we make this something that'll work and that will represent, uh, agriculture, production agriculture and teach, teach people that we're still here. We're, we're trying to survive. We're trying to kind of fight the cities and the municipalities and, and their, uh, desires to grow. And, uh, hopefully we can continue to do that. Is there any questions?
I, I appreciate your, um, your perspective and, and the history and, and the things there. I think, I think it is important to recognize that just because we changed the code doesn't mean it fixes code violations in other areas. So, uh, but, but even just knowing with you that some permanence would help, some permanence on your ability to, you know, to fix some of these things helps. And, uh, and I think that, I think that you're right. Seven years ago, we wrote a code to try to make things work and we've learned a lot in those seven years. And your experience helps us know, you know, how to change things, but that's not going to, um, that's not going to change an existing code violation from someone that didn't get a permit for something they needed a permit for. That's going to get handled separately.
Okay. It reminds me of, uh, the Spanish Fork Farmers Market, uh, someone felt that it was appropriate to allow someone to sell like goat soap and it opened up this can of worms that was like, hey, I'm milking the goat and creating this. And now, now I feel like we're kind of going into this territory of what is agritourism and what is not. And, and, and I think you need to get to some level of comfort to, to do what was intended with the use. Anyway, like I bring that up because it was literally, I mean, it blew up really a lot about our farmers market and really started, you know, are we selling, you know, wait, is that honey local? Is that honey from another state? And, you know, and you start to really dive into these things and, and I don't know that I know all of the, the answers today. The, the, like I say, the little roller coaster that, uh, w- we have, you know, you pedal a bike and it goes up and down. It's very similar to riding behind the four wheeler that they, that they tow the little kids around. They may never get that opportunity, you know? And, uh, so you're definitely, you're definitely spot on with making sure that, you know, it, w- we have the definition between agritourism and carnivals. I appreciate hearing you say that, Rex.
And I think with that said though, I mean, a bounce house doesn't necessarily have anything to do with agritourism, but if it means that the toddlers are entertained while the family picks out their pumpkin, then it actually helps get the people there and it helps them recognize the farm.
Yeah, our fir- our first year, we, we were approached by someone to put up a bounce house and of course it's not allowed. And so.
Yeah, but I think it would, you know, if it helps draw the family there so they can see the agriculture, I don't think that's necessarily.
Yeah, I mean, we, we thought it would be a, a good thing, but it, it wasn't allowed. So, so, uh, we've, we've followed the ordinance the best we can and, uh, I think we've done a pretty good job. So. Okay. Anything else?
No, thanks, Rex.
Thank you.
Brady? Brett? Brady? Okay.
So my name is Brady Brammer. I'm here in my role as an attorney for B and H, uh, properties and, you know, I wanted to, to address a, a couple of things. I think, um, first of all, for B and H, just they've gotten permits every year. And so there may be some things that they're, you know, that they're working through right now, but this is not about the permitting process. What this is about is related to, um, it, the statute itself or the ordinance itself on this point is related to storage. And, you know, one of the reasons why, uh, I feel the planning commission went the direction they did was because they could see that there were some pretty significant problems. And the biggest problem is that once you apply, so you're, you have, you know, an ag property and then once you apply for any of these temporary use permits, under the ordinance, you lose property rights because things you otherwise could have stored on your property now have to be, the language is removed entirely if you use them incident to the temporary use. And so there is a confusion and a conflation of the difference between use and structure. And there are possibilities to divide those out to say, when you're using it, you have to stop the use. But if you still had a right to store, you would be able to do that. But under the ordinance now, you are required to remove it entirely from the property. And then you just go put it on a different ag property that doesn't have a, you know, a temporary use as opposed to just leave it on the property and use it while you have the permit and don't when you don't have the permit. I mean, that's the, that's kind of the easier line. And, and some of that lies with the idea of what is a structure? So under your code two point oh four of the land use code, anything that has more than one part put together is a structure. My pen under the Utah County Code is a structure. It is that vague and, and like ambiguous as to what a structure is. Okay? Now, then they say, and, and that's the Utah County portion. Then when you go to FEMA, it's a, then they have the FEMA definition of a structure and that's a little more tight, but the Utah County portion is loose. And what that creates and the problem that that creates is that now instead of having a consistent, uniform set of guidelines whereby citizens can actively participate in a capitalist economy with their property, it is an enforcement guideline where if there are complaints about it, now everything gets enforced using vague terms as opposed to, you know, you have these vested rights. And so that's, that's really part of the concern and what we've tried to address is a narrow portion really related to storage. However, and as noted by the planning commission, there's more out there that needs to be addressed with regards to the difference between temporary structure, permanent structure, permit required structure, non-permit required structure. There's a lot out there. And then that's not to count the issue of that the code currently has, you know, three different uses, whether that be a seasonal use, an agritourism use, a temporary use, uh, you know, and how those interact and whether they interact, can they interact? You know, there, there's just a lot of ambiguity in the ordinance and, and, you know, as we deal with the law, uh, you know, there's a, there's. And, and, uh, you know, as we deal with the law, uh, you know, there's a, there's a famous Greek philosopher named Heracles. And his whole point was you can never step in the same river twice. And the law is a river and sometimes it needs to be adjusted to the circumstances and it will always be different than it was yesterday or seven years ago. You know, what we're using, what we're finding on these agritourism issues is we have a dwindling and dying agriculture, uh, economy in the state of Utah. And we're trying to find things to prop them up. It is not, you know, land use that promotes agriculture. What it actually is in the state code is agriculture combined with tourism. So if you go to the state court, uh, state, state code on the definition of agr- of agritourism, it is a capitalistic system for agriculture properties to remain agriculture properties because they're getting a shot in the yar- in the arm with a new use that they weren't having otherwise. And, and it's a wonderful benefit that it pulls people out to the farms and they interact with agriculture. But that's not the only benefit. It is for the landholder to monetize their farm because otherwise they stop growing things and, and they start growing houses. They, they develop the property because that becomes the rational decision that they have to make moving forward and then we lose more and more ag.
Highest and best use monetarily for the property owners.
Yes.
On a side note, um, speaking of the fact that it doesn't make a lot of money to farm every time we're dealing with green belt and the state law says a reasonable expectation of profit. Wondering if that area of the state code could be updated because the reasonable expectation of profit is kinda crazy when dealing with small acreage.
It is and.
Just thought I'd throw that out there.
I'm happy to work with.
Hence why those of us that had hobby farms used agritourism.
Yeah.
Because the expectation of profit from actually farming.
Half of our farms, uh, and, and I don't know if that's still the case, but a lot of the farms were held in ownership for tax write-off purposes because they were money losers.
Oh yeah, my tax write-offs on my farm were like the reason I owned it.
Yeah, and, and so if you're actually depending on monetizing your farm and you don't have vast swaths of acreage that was acquired long ago in the past that you're not paying money on, you know, your ability to monetize your farm is, we see people getting more and more creative with their farmland because they're desperate to maintain their ag lifestyle. And this is one methodology and, and one tool that allows people to maintain that lifestyle.
That makes a lot of sense to me. And as you, as you mentioned that on the agritourism being a tourism combined with ag, that actually makes a lot of sense. I just figured while we were here and we had the, um, you know, attention of a state legislator who depend, apparently understands this. We should mention that that section of the code needs a little updating.
Their code is also not perfect and sometimes needs to be amended about 500 times.
You have like a mutual agreement. I will work on updating this code, you can work on updating that code.
Let's keep working on it together. I, I would say with regards to the issue before us today.
Yeah.
Getting us refocused on this issue.
Um, she's always trying to negotiate.
I know, I know.
Hey, I am a constant negotiator for the citizens of Utah.
I, it's, it's wonderful and you are.
My full-time gig.
And, and I appreciate that. And, and staff has been kind enough to have some good conversations on this and I hope that we can have some more. But I think this is a first step dealing with the issue of storage. And that's really what it's dealing with. However, it is a first step and it is not a solution or a panacea of the problem, you know, that my clients are confronting.
Yeah.
Nor is it for the problem of the county on providing clear guidelines moving forward. That still needs a lot of work and, and we're happy to help on anything.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and I think, I think you did a very good job of laying out the different types that I'm gonna go back and look at our meeting minutes when the meeting comes out because I think you did a great job outlining between like structures and permanent structures and temporary use structures and, and I agree. And then, and then looking at, we need code that makes sense for each of those categories.
Yeah.
And it's completely void of that now.
Yeah, and, and I think that when you have clear guidelines.
Paul followed everything you said.
You get better relationships between the neighbors because they know what's expected and what isn't. And, and, you know, I, I know that my client is committed to try to work, to trying to work with the neighbor to make sure that they're mitigating the harms that the neighbor may be feeling. Now, you know.
As they should.
And, and I think that's, you know, and if, and at the planning commission, every other neighbor came and said, we actually really like having them here and they've been a great neighbor to us. And, and sometimes that just means there's a few slight adjustments that, you know, that we can accommodate and try to help with, uh, you know, but I do think that, um, that this change to the ordinance really just helps with getting rid of that, what is an onerous and nonsensical issue of go move all your stuff off of this and put it on another property that's the same as yours. You just didn't use it on that property for the temporary use. That's really what we're talking about, so thank you. Are there any other questions?
I don't think so for now, but maybe.
I don't think so. But I think that does make sense of this idea of what's temporary and what's not. And, and we don't have those definitions and, but the idea of the removal of things that, as long as it's not like, you know, we wanna make sure that, that it's not a Ferris wheel.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys, if you guys can, in the permitting process, if they said, look, these are things that you need to, you know, this would be a type of structure that you need to get a permanent structure portion or you could get a, you can use it temporarily, but then you have to certify that you're not using it outside of its use.
For commercial use.
It can be on your property like a playground, but you can't use it for commercial purposes when you're, when you're not under your permit. I think that's totally fair game, uh, you know, but right now it's kinda like, you know, you're getting situations where people are putting in temporary structures and removing them and they're not as safe because they're not fixed in any way or.
Not from Rex, right? Like hearing Rex say on, on bells of, you know, corn stalks and.
But you, you, you're only permitted for commercial use 65 days a year, but then other than that, it can be permanent. I think that's what I, I would like to get to that point.
Yep, yep.
And you did mention there were some permits that you're still working through. Are you able to address any of those or talk about some?
Not right, uh, not right now. I, I, I haven't been doing the permit side of this on behalf of my client. And so they're working directly with the county to resolve any, any of the issues there and the concerns. Um, but this has come up as an issue because now the neighbor wants, uh, you know, some of the issues are, are related to the permits and others are just items that are used on the property to support the corn bellies operation, but are not usually used the rest of the year for anything, you know, like a fire pit. The, it makes no sense to go and dig out a fire pit to remove it. If you're just, you can leave it fallow and use it for your family use and that's not a problem. But under the code, uh, you know, under this ordinance, they have to remove everything entirely. And then it's just, well, I guess we're not gonna enforce that. Yeah, I know it says that, but we're not gonna enforce it. And, and that, that kinda creates a, an odd interplay of, well, what should be enforced and what shouldn't? And is, it is only, is it only based on someone complaining that enforcement happens?
You know the answer to that, right?
Yes, I do.
I mean, even at a city level, right?
Yeah, no, it's, but, but even.
It's crazy how many basements have dance studios in them, right?
Correct.
And unless the neighbors complain about traffic every hour dropping them off. But you're right, this, the county's just not gonna spend the amount of money to go and enforce all code violations.
Sure, but, but the uniform enforcement of even those that receive complaints is, uh, is sometimes difficult on the local level.
Sure, yeah. And I think, um, we wanna hear, I would like to hear, you know, suggestions as, and, you know, if, if other counties have a better, you know, uh, feeling for ordinance.
I think we have the Farm Bureau here to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, to maybe give us any ideas that, that they have.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thanks Brady.
Thank you.
Please come up.
Oh, I'll try to be brief. So my name's Terry Camp. I'm the vice president of public policy for the Utah Farm Bureau Federation. Um, I, I would just like to start out by saying agritourism's growing really rapidly in Utah. And I think even when you were working with Rex, like you said, seven years ago, I think it's evolved a lot even since then. Um, instead of just being kind of a side hustle and even just a seasonal 60 days a year kinda thing, it's, a lot of these operations are relying on it almost year round. Um, maybe not all 12 months, but definitely doing, you know, things in the fall, Christmas events, you know, cut flowers and things in the spring, um, other summer, summer festivals, sunflower festivals. And so e- even just the 65 day thing, I think, you know, the, the county could even look at that. Um, in addition, um, Representative Brammer kinda mentioned the, the definition of agritourism in state code. We recently, just this 2024 general session, uh, passed a new agritourism law in Utah that adds liability protections for operators. It added a standardized warning sign, an agritourism registry. So the state is putting a really heavy emphasis on helping farms stay economically viable through agritourism by, by adding those protections. Um, I, I would just say on this specific thing, not to get us too off track, uh, we are supportive of this change. We think that it's a little nonsensical to have to remove all structures from the property unless they get like a separate land use permit. Um, there's a lot of challenges with all on-farm structures as it relates to agritourism. And in fact, we're even going to be looking at the state level, um, building code related because agricultural structures don't have to have the same, when they're used for agriculture, don't have to have the same building permit requirements. But then yet some of them are used in agritourism. So that's another thing the state might be looking at. And then to your green belt point, Commissioner Powers Gardner, um, that's another thing we've looked at is whether we wanna add, you know, agritourism as a qualifying use under, under green belt. Idaho includes it as a qualifying use. Um, very simple language that I can send to you. Um, so that is something we're also looking at at the state level. But just, just in terms of this, um, we're very supportive of this change. Uh, we think it's ridiculous that it all has to be removed from the property completely. Um, and then I would just also say that kind of to, uh, Mr. Brammer's point, um, all these kind of stacking of, um, different temporary permits. So like seasonal and holiday events, um, there's seasonal sales and services, Christmas tree sales. Uh, and then there's also a produce stand in farmer's market. We're not even sure like whether you can stack all those and you could apply because they're all under different timelines. So like for example, seasonal and holiday events can go up to, um, 90 days, whereas agritourism can only be 65 days. But seasonal and holiday events also says it includes corn mazes and different types of agritourism activities. Um, but then you can have a separate Christmas tree sales permit. Um, so it's just very convoluted. Um, I would, I would recommend that the county, um, look at Weaver County's ordinance that's been recently redone and also Washington County has a pretty, uh, good agritourism ordinance. But Farm Bureau is happy to work with county planners and with the commission to, you know, put together some recommendations for some other things that might wanna, you might wanna look at in your ordinance. Um, but again, for today's purposes, we're very supportive of this change and think that it, you know, will solve some immediate problems and especially going into this fall agritourism season. Um, but there's definitely a lot of other changes we would recommend to your ordinance, so thank you.
Thanks Terry.
And I would just, as I said, I would be, I would be very interested in, you know, I'll look at those counties, but also any suggestions you have from other states and things. We, if you've already got a list of policies and procedures and code that would make sense, that's very helpful to us.
Yeah, we're happy to work on that and get your response.
I reinvent the wheel.
Brett, go ahead. Slam that down if you started talking.
I wanna thank you for your time. I don't wanna repeat anything that's already been said. Um, but, uh, yeah, I'm, you know, this is the path I chose to raise my family in agriculture because my father lost his farm when I was, uh, about seven years old. And so luckily I landed here in Utah County, what a great place. Um, and so, you know, most farms, they're kinda on the slate for farming houses. And one of the ways to help maintain that farmland for one more generation. And I've told my kids this and I'll tell everybody publicly, over my dead body, will that farm be developed for houses while I'm alive? If we're allowed to do ag tourism. Um, I've chosen the path to educate kids, see smiles on kids, to bring them to the farm because I love it. I did the first corn maze west of the Mississippi River. I have always thought outside of the box and I will continue to do that. But there is nothing more satisfying, whether you're one that helps facilitate it or you're a parent or you're a school teacher, to see kids come out, fill dirt, touch grass and be a part of the farm. And I'm just asking to let's get something done so corn bellies can open this fall because right now it's not possible with some of the things that, you know, we, they, our farm trucks have to be removed from our property, which every, just like, uh, one of the commissioner or the commission bodies, uh, Brother McMullen said, every farm needs an old farm truck. A farm without a truck is, is what? Um, and just one other really quick point is I agree with Rex. Um, you know, there is a lot more, there's a lot of great stuff in the code, but there needs to be more. You know, the last thing I think anybody in this room wants, someone to take a 10 acre parcel, convert it all to pavement and a carnival, that's not, that's not right. That's not ag tourism. You know, uh, um, Weaver County, they have a lot of great stuff in theirs like where a certain percentage of land has to remain in production agriculture, which I think that's great. Those are some things we need to adopt and I would love, again, with work with Farm Bureau and the county to adopt some of these things so that ag tourism can stay agritourism and not have this abuse and, and, uh, become something that it wasn't intended to be. And, uh, again, I just wanna get kids lost, let them pick a pumpkin and that's my story and I'm sticking to it. Thank you.
Well, I got you Brett. So it, you know, as we were talking earlier, you know, I, I was reminded of, before we even did anything at, at our family, my dad had his little, we call it the store right next to his house and somebody complained. Somebody said, hey, that, that little shop and you go there and you just either drop cash in a box, right? And get a few ears of corn or what have you. And so we moved that, that little store back, right? Porta pad, some of the neighbors down in the lake shore and stuff. And so it was an example of being willing to, you know, my dad taught me a lesson there. Okay, I did something. He didn't, he didn't know perhaps he was doing anything or he needed a permit or anything. But once he then went and addressed the county, they said, hey, you've gotta move that back two feet. And I can, you can imagine some of the feelings as we were working on that shit to move it two feet, right? It just, it just burnt my dad. I just remember him being like, oh, I don't have to ask government's permission to do this. But I appreciate you being at the pulpit today, being willing to discuss how to make this a better ordinance is really my point with that story. We moved it back. It's been a great thing for my dad to be able to put produce in that, right? And, and for people to be able to stop by and on their honor, drop money in the box. That is the American way, in my opinion. Pick up a squash and drive off, you know, and if you're lucky enough to see, you know, my dad or somebody out there, then I think that's, that's really what should be, uh, my message. Um, so along those lines, you know, so working with staff to make sure that permits are, you know, done. I'm hearing two different things, right? Like Rex wants something built strong that's going to withstand, right? And, but all he's been able to do is, you know, what he's been able to do. And so I think that a tweak really from maybe an insurance guy's perspective or an attorney's perspective might be like, hey, this is gonna protect and be a safer, a safer situation. So I wanna make sure we get that correct as well, uh, moving forward with any permitting and things. So I appreciate you being willing to, you know, be to the pulpit and, 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 and work with county and staff. And I think that's how we got the original one, right? Was those that are doing it day to day, making sure, um, we vet concerns. That's how we develop in our county. That's how we, that's how we make sure we get the, the best product, so.
Yeah, well, just, you know, as a side note, I mean, like these old farm trucks, I didn't know we needed a permit for them. The county told us we did, so we've already spent like $12,000 to get them engineered so they can be permitted on our property. Now they're saying we can't permit them because it's on an old truck, farm truck. So, you know, we are willing and we want our neighbors to be happy. We wanna work with them. We wanna be a good neighbor. We just, we're just here to put smiles on people's face, you know? So we're, we're not hard to work with.
Thanks Brett. Any other questions?
I was just gonna say one really quick thing. Wise men once told me in business, you know, they ask a question, what's the most important things? Marketing, employees, um, accounting, safety, or actually I can't remember the, the fifth one. But, you know, most people would say. But, you know, most people would say what seems the most obvious, but they said the most important thing is safety. Because if it's not safe, it's a matter of time you'll be out of business. Temporary stuff, it's the reason we have permits, the reason we, the county goes to all these extents to make things sure things are built safe, houses and everything, because safety really is important. It's important for the American people. It's important for people who come to our farm. And everything being temporary is really difficult to make it safe long term. Extension cords on top of the ground and all that stuff. It's just, it's just really hard. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, any more questions?
No, I'm good.
Thank you.
Hi, Sir Greg. Either one.
Do we have the final recommendation on what the ordinance change would be?
Well, you have one from, you have one from the planning commission.
Right, one from the planning commission, one from the attorneys. I'm just wondering.
I know where you're going with this. Go ahead and finish your thought.
I mean, do we, I, I, I don't think either fully there, so I didn't know if we've got something that encompasses kind of what we've heard and what we're thinking, or if we need a little more time to write on this.
Yes, I I I think the the intent, from what I understand, the planning commission's recommendation was to narrow it to agritourism of all their temporary uses and then throw out some ideas of some uh, potential um, parameters or conditions to address.
I just haven't seen like the actual wording that we would adopt in the code because of that.
Because we were waiting to see if that's, if the commission was going to follow the planning commission's recommendation to do that.
So, um, if you could get to a point where you were able to review maybe Weber and Washington County if um, the Farm Bureau.
Yeah, and I would love to see the Farm Bureau recommendation and.
Have you been able to peruse those at all?
You know, believe it or not, we actually do do that, you know? Um, we actually favor agritourism. We have a an ordinance uh, in place, temporary ordinance. We're on on our own volition. We've been pursuing a permanent agritourism ordinance. Um, and we've been working on that for a number of months. We've looked at other counties. We always do at different ordinances. To be, uh, to be honest with you, relative to what we're talking about today and temporary uses and temporary festivals and carnivals, there's not much out there. Now, there's some really robust permanent agritourism ordinances, Weber County and others, and we are, we've looked at those and we're going to follow those as we uh, create our permanent agritourism. But as it relates to um, temporary uses, there's nothing out there. And so ours is, you know, probably the most uh, most robust and yeah, it it could be cumbersome. And we've learned that over the years and and are open to um, to those types of changes as we're directed, as we've done in the past.
Yeah, from what I'm hearing and um, from both Mr. Larson and and the folks, folks at Cornbellies, I think we need something that allows for permanent structures with temporary use permits. Right? Permanent structure that doesn't have to be removed, but with temporary use permit for the agritourism. Um, and I'm not, I haven't seen that encompassed. And so that's what I would like to look at. Um, but we also want to try to get this done in a timely manner so that these folks have the ability to get something built before they open in this fall. So I'm wondering what type, how tight of a timeline can you do that in?
Um, we've actually had these type of discussions with the applicant pre, prior to them submitting. Um, those type of conditions that didn't turn out into their, into their um, into their proposal. But so, so we've been thinking about it. We've got some ideas. Um, I think we could have something ready to go. I don't think we meet here for a couple of weeks. I imagine we could uh, have a a proposal that's sort of ready to be looked at within a couple of weeks, for sure.
Okay, would it be easy, Paul, would it be easier for us to uh, to deny this item and then bring that back? Or to just continue for two weeks and then replace it with those items? You want to continue with that easier? Okay.
Otherwise, we'd have to go back to the planning commission and.
Oh, yeah, no, we don't want to.
And just let me, if you don't mind, just thirty, thirty seconds. Um, the, the structures that would be allowed, or once they're there more, over a certain period of time, they're considered permanent by building code. So these are going to have to meet building code standards for for commercial use. And uh, I think that's what everyone wants. I don't think we want unsafe structures to be used. Uh, the examples we're given, the, you know, the temporary nature does, could potentially create unsafe structures. So these will be, you know, held to a a different standard because you have people that aren't familiar. It's not like your your playground. It's, it's a playground you're not familiar with. You don't know where all the steps are and all the safety features are. So, so those will have to be incorporated once these become permanent.
Maybe thoughts on that?
I don't have any thoughts right now on that.
As long as it's within reason.
Oh, I mean, it's building code, so hopefully it is.
I'm going to, I caveat that. Long, as long as it's within reason, from what I consider reasonable, which tends to be different than what, I mean, my risk tolerance is a little higher than our attorneys, as you could imagine, but.
They've all built something before and maybe been angry at a fire marshal or a building inspector, right? But at the end of the day, I think.
Yeah, as long, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, these are going to be, this is really a a a commercial use of these structures for a period, a a limited period of time.
Yeah.
But they're still commercial and, you know, people aren't familiar with, like they would be in their own property. So you, those need to be built in.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, um, then I'll make a motion to continue this item for two weeks. And then if you guys can give us a a draft of a code that you think encompasses what we've talked about here, I would appreciate that.
I can second that motion. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to continue. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Make work to get something in place that that works. Item fifteen, Commissioner, did you pull that up or do you need my?
Um, let me look.
I got it right here if you need it.
Yeah, if you've got it pulled up. I came straight from the housing authority meeting, so didn't have a chance to get everything. Okay. Um, item number fifteen is to adopt resolution um, designating August as Utah County Breastfeeding Month. And here's the proposed resolution. Says whereas all major medical authorities recommend exclusive human milk feeding for the first six months of life with continued. Uh, we're going to have to change that. They always give us this recommendation. I always have to change it. It's breastfeeding. So, we're going to change that. I'm going to propose my resolution have a change. So I'll say whereas all major medical authorities recommend exclusive breastfeeding for the first six months of life with continued breastfeeding for at least one year, whereas the U S Breastfeeding Committee designates Au- August as National Breastfeeding Month. And the World Alliance for Breastfeeding Action designates August first through seventh as World Breastfeeding Week. Whereas National Breastfeeding Month focuses on the use of data and management to build and reinforce the connections between breastfeeding and a broad spectrum of other health topics and initiatives. Whereas National Breastfeeding Month and World Breastfeeding Week provide important opportunities to address barriers to breastfeeding faced by families across the United States and around the world. Whereas breastfeeding is the biological norm for infant feeding and proven primary prevention strategy that builds a foundation for lifelong health and wellness. Whereas the evidence and the value of breastfeeding to the health of the, it says birthing parent, we're going to say mother. Just going to say, I had to change this last year too. Apparently, Asley has, Aslan has not gotten the memo from the Health Department that we will not call them birthing parents, but mothers. Um, the health of the mother and child is scientific, solid and continually reaffirmed by new research. Whereas the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention publishes an annual breastfeeding report card, which has consistently shown suboptimal breastfeeding initiation rates as well as substantial declines in continued and exclusive breastfeeding as babies grow. Whereas there are substantial health disparities when there is a lack of access to lactation support resulting in reduced breastfeeding rates and an associated increase for adverse health outcomes. Whereas the time of the resolution and the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention reports that among Utah infants born in twenty nineteen, eighty six point five percent were ever breastfed with lower breastfeeding rates in some populations. This report also shows that Utah County's breastfeeding rates exceeded those of the state at a ninety point five percent. Whereas the Healthy People Initiative consistently identifies breastfeeding as a national health priority. Whereas the great majority of new parents want their infants to receive breast milk but face significant barriers in community healthcare and employment settings. Whereas some people may choose not to breastfeed or unable to do so. However, all parents can benefit from access to education on infant nutrition and wellness. Whereas studies confirm that breast milk is the most developmentally appropriate nourishment for infants. Whereas protecting and supporting breastfeeding is essential to ensuring critical food security and immunologic protection for Utah County's youngest people. And whereas the consistent and well documented health, economic and environmental benefits of breastfeeding shows that this is an investment that will continue to produce measurable dividends across the country and many times over for families, employers and the government. Now therefore be it resolved that Utah County Commissioners Brandon Gordon, Tom Sakovich and Amelia Powers Gardner and Utah County Designates August as Breastfeeding Month supports the goals of National Breastfeeding Month and World Breastfeeding Week and supports policies and funding to ensure that all lactating mothers can access a full range of appropriate support from healthcare institutions, insurers, employers, early care and education providers, researchers and government entities. Resolved this day. Um, and I have sponsored this resolution every year that I've been a commissioner for a couple of reasons. Uh, I think number one, um, I myself was a breastfeeding mother and having to do that and manage a a career was fairly difficult. Um, I, my, my oldest is eighteen years old and I was working for the world's largest manufacturer of mining, construction equipment, diesel engines and gas turbines when I had him. And as you can imagine, when I had him, I was the first woman that my boss had ever had that worked for her that had a baby. So, the idea of getting time to go pump and to nurse for my baby was completely foreign. And I think the more that we normalize this, the more regular it will become. Um, on top of that, several years ago, there was a, um, there was a shortage of of formula. And having ready access to formula for infant feeding was not possible. Um, and that really raised the the concern for me as as a mother, but also as a commissioner that we, we have more babies than any other county in the state. And we had a lot of little citizens that didn't have readily access to their food and knowing that their um, that their mothers would need resources. I myself could not have successfully breastfed my children while working full time and traveling had I not had access to good quality lactation information. So I want to make sure that we um, we are doing everything we can to ensure that that folks have access to that. Um, and the more we can normalize it and support it, then the more access people will have. And then they can choo, they're free to choose whatever they want for their families, whatever works best for them. But I want to make sure that they at least have the resources available to them so that they can make informed decisions.
Maybe about ten years ago, at the, the city that I served as councilman at, we had to update our ordinance because we did not allow for uh, employ, nursing mothers that were employees of that city to be able to take their break when they needed to nurse. Or go pump, exactly, or, you know, whatever. And uh, so we were able to update that. So I hope that we have that. Maybe that's something that.
We updated that right around May of twenty twenty one when I became the commissioner.
Gotcha, so.
It used to say that lactating mothers needed to consult with their boss on a time that worked best. And I was like, or we could have the nursing mother tell their boss what they need.
It, yeah, makes sense.
Right.
Okay, glad that got updated then.
We have that, not only do we have that updated, but we have facilities. We've got one here on this floor. We have one in the Health and Justice Building. We have one in the Historic Courthouse. There's one down at the Security Center. Um, wherever we have a mother who needs access to facilities, we have worked to make sure that they have those facilities and that we have a reasonable. Uh, well, and besides that, it's going to change, right? Like if, if your child is sick or in a growth pattern, or if they're cluster feeding at the moment, you're going to need more than two breaks a day. There may be times when you only need two breaks a day, and we now have the flexibility in our county policy that allows that for our employees. Um, and then hopefully us declaring August Breastfeeding Month will encourage other employers in the community to look at that.
How to entertain a motion?
I will make a motion to approve item number fifteen with the aforementioned changes.
Uh huh, understood.
Second, absolutely.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes.
Aye, yep.
Okay, now is the moment in our meeting where we go to public comment. If there's anyone that would like to address the commission. Okay, thank you, everyone. We'll go into closed session.